Oh, do you know if we the host or not? It's alright, I I literally live like straight away, I live on very very street. Don't be so creepy about it. You're welcome. Okay, yeah, I'll I'm gonna hang out a second and then just can call back if you need me to. And we had a session uh last Tuesday evening on uh. Uh sorry, there are ten and there's legal action and we had a discussion. Either right or this uh great association media there is no legal action. As well. Uh special credit case.
He's your mayor, just wanted to, as we don't have any special presentations tonight, but as part of the transition of a new city council member coming on. And the city council or a council member coming up and a new council member coming on, we do have a persist you here tonight to film that. Uh for us and so you will see that individual kind of menu. But online later this week about this.
So okay. Public participation is welcome to invited all three council meetings I am set aside for residents to address the city council on my. Although there are other items not included on the regular agenda comments turn on either of the regular agenda. Please address the council when that item of a comment. Does they request that person to address the city council returning from making personal slanderous profane or disruptive remarks? Council members would recognize the mayor, may ask clarifying questions, but no action meeting. Pleasantly for the public comment section of the meeting. Under the Brown Act was it become prohibited from discussing or taking action on any items on this on the post agenda. This time is set aside for residents to address this to be helpful. I'm sorry, for the agenda as well as other items not included on the agenda. If your comments concern and listed under the public hearing for our new business section of the agenda, please address the city council. Without item looking for a double comment. Please speak into the microphone from ability of somebody about trying to adjust up and down to come to hear. Please state your name for the record prior to writing your comments. Please address the council as a goal. If you have documents to present, please provide a minimum seven copy using some public record. Please limit your remarks to five minutes. Since the council was unable to take action on any issues not on the agenda, you're that or maybe refer to staffs or people are placed on a future agenda. The public commentary is not intended to create a question of the answer to your conversation with council or city staff. Besides public comments. No other matter this time, I will just have a comment. The time just. Uh I'm seven, city man, city council transition and their election.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I agree to the city council, so I have James Love, the city manager for the city of La Rica. And uh tonight, we are here to celebrate this man right here, council member day, great day. Uh so I prepared a speech and then create an opportunity to say support and then we'll have the public say divorce. And then we'll transition into um swearing on our new council member. So the first this is all Mr. King, so. I'm just gonna break right into the speech I've prepared. So. As a council member, uh Dwayne J. value that approach to state council. Probably we must have looked around solutions to the homeless crisis in San Francisco. Serving a year plus on a final commission, council member J. did this with the local government and before he even had been on the La Rica City Council in twenty sixteen. Where he was served two terms for a total of eight years. During his time on council, Mr. King took on the role of the chair of the continuum of care at Iger versus New County. Council member Dwayne King worked to facilitate multiple point in times. To bring a homeless liaison officer to the city of La Rica on a grant funded salary position. And to integrate those experiences homelessness into the meeting for the wider perspectives on the issues. Might has gone a lot beyond his personal life as well, I've worked immediately through the public community, the private colony, and in some instances part time work and this open. In government reactive solutions rarely have any long lasting effect on them. I'm sorry, and council member Dwayne K. has helped support and lead me a project that will help strengthen and evolve this crisis in the term. Some of those projects include the low barriers shelter that were opening during La Rica. Uh the support from city council for the crossroads supportive. The palace shelter project that county has grant funded and will be on leased property from the city of La Rica. Is another example of the infrastructure project that will have a long term impact on the leading amount of people uh living locally on the streets of Sissy County. Council member King has also supported uh the home key project that would also provide more non complicated shelters to give uh the majority a plus on this street. And into a more secure living situation, we hope to bring back to the city council in early quarter uh this quarter. By grant application for that. Council member K was not born and raised here in La Rica, he comes from, has been part of this area for many generations. And his interest in seeing La Rica improve has also been at the forefront of this time. Council member K was one of the two council members that sat on the fire out of commission that lent a justification for paid buyer staff and the new fire department. And that were recently funded and work is happening to bring paid staff to La Rica Fire Department in twenty twenty five. In the negotiations of uh the site for a new fire. Dwayne has also been vocal to support the community leader project that will be leading in the early term of twenty twenty five. As well as the funding of the rehabilitation and design of bring equal which will be reviewed by city council in the fourth. Although Dwayne has supported bringing the concert uh in the park series back discovers Sissy taking on a reactive role in planning city event. A support for the Harvey B. project and more, what I will uh always remember about council member King. Is for his engagement with me when I took this job as city manager to the city. And so during that process, Dwayne was the mayor, and on the honorary process presented. Uh many opportunities to discuss the vision of La Rica in the interest that council have a making improvement for the city. After interviewing, I was not necessarily convinced that the job was suited for me, but after a phone call with Dwayne, I was convinced that this. So I thank you, Dwayne, for the conversation of the uh meeting that this position. Uh we thank you for your civic duty of the eight years as a city council member for the city of La Rica and for your willingness to speak to anyone and everyone on any issue in the city of La Rica. No matter how they are shown the volition. So please join me in a celebration of future former council member, Dwayne King. Way I like to do this.
What about today? Uh it's been a long uh eight years. Like sort of better saying. Years of public service. We started actually with the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And fighters doing that, putting on numerous events and restructuring it, then also planning commission to the city council. Also, I'm not look, so that they will say that also. Lucky to be a part of the beginning stages, the police station. And the highly current police chief who is doing fixing the job, one of the managing there on these. I'm very happy about being in the public. We also, the council, we involved in hiring the first fire chief. As a full time employee, this time at the board. And instead of beginning stages or papers that new fighter station. Then really lucky to be a big part of a lot of huge things that's run on in La Rica. Went to some little hobby time. Spent fifteen years um I was there, it was very cold it, so it was not in time. We uh city manager retired. And we started new, right searching for a new city manager after long searching down the grid. It was a long process, it was a long process, but it was a great process. We, in the end, we came out of the city as a good place. But, you know, this is, this is work with everybody here in council and previous council. Has it been, has it been all fun? No, no, it hasn't been all fun, but you know that um. Good things happen, good things are continue to happen. Know I have a lot of big uh. That a lot of good things are gonna happen in future La Rica. Um just thank you guys for bearing with me, listening to all the easy ideas and. All my, I have my thoughts and passion and willingness to jump in. This stuff that. It's all about all of the tasks and I don't think, you know, I knew what I was getting into, I said, no, that was years ago. That was um, I was quite hoping I got on council. La Rica was, Miami wasn't even doing it. So we, La Rica and Miami got involved in doing that, it's great, I'm in the waters there, yeah. But that morning was um basically about task was actually running those meetings because they were in. So we jumped in the city and we made some balance trying to not only. Put an end to on this situation, actually do something. Hopefully, we get some cities on, and those, there's a lot of these um projects. Because there's no simple fix, but. Think that council does a good job on things and they all have good heads on their shoulders, very basic things. Now, I mean, it's a time of turning point, um you know, life is uh. Busy, um business wise, it's always crazy trying to juggle, trying to juggle uh work and. City council within all the other committees and I have to do and planning time committee and the C O C and all that stuff too. I think a bit more time when I was mayor, I'm gonna forget my own business and it's a scary thing to say that, but it's. But, you know, after um, you know, uh. That's sixteen years of public service, so. Stand aside and let the willing people jump in there and take over and do their job. And I understand the level of pace and council, they can do a great, another thing for the city. It's time for me, like I said, to consider wanting to take that step. We uh be able to spend some time, a lot, we would truly love to see me. Be able to uh. Spend some ponies and we've taken last eight years, we've taken two vacations. And so I think it's time to stay vacation, ensures you want to do that. But, you know, it's family, it's time reason. You say, we recently just um, you know, one young gal. That we're soon to be a puppy. And baby boy, a alley boy. Yeah, I see. During a week, we're legally adopted. This seems for me to be able to spend some quality time with them. And so I just thank you council for, for letting me do the things I've done and. I appreciate everything you guys are going to do and done for me. So this is uh, this is a team. And it's hard for me to step down too. But I know it's time and thank you guys for everything. For listening to me and just bear with me all these years.
We put back down and there's safe public comment before we go to the intermission, yeah. We will have an inter. We will have an intermission after the public comment, we do have a snack for uh for Peter Joy and uh then we'll move on to the next part of the meetings.
Alright. So we will have. The public comment where any remarks or any uh messages for uh some outstanding councilmen, hey? And in order to uh city council uh or remind us that we like the. I will wish everybody that this future, so I will, but I will ask if you would like to come up and um. Good thing uh. My dad, she's woman. Out of that, that's Kate's old suit, as long as the time went, we're running stuff. Are we tired? The team was not on my video. He will be the first person I talked to, especially the chief that he's probably the manager. They even started that. True, it also, I appreciate it. He helps the C O C and all that. I'll still be working, I just went late.
Say my name.
Yes.
I need to thank you for any work of service to our community. And I want to tell you, I I appreciate your willingness. To spend, I did heat crack at the time, but. Quite a bit of time discussing issues that were important to me as one of your constituents. You're willing to speak to me, hear my opinion, been always accepted and brought, you gave me proof for thoughts. And several of the issues, and I'm not going to go into them, but I am going to say in world. In the words of Henry Wadsworth Longfellow, in Psalm of Life, a hero in a strike in my. And in your future, best wishes, Godspeed. Great, um. And I thank you for every single call that you returned. Thank you for making me feel like I mattered. And thank you for being here for us and fighting for us and continuing to fight for us. For our hen house and the house of this and making our city better. Thank you.
Okay, you, I would like to stand for all of the citizens, you just don't, I'm crazy. Eight years, but you have budget, you so much, you over, so much so. What the city, the budget, and the plan, all of the hours. Uh, a lot of things in it, they're good missing. And that okay. And for the time. I want to be things to be personal with. Without. I can sure as, involve in some way.
We mean uh, sorry, anybody else from the public? Any other staff? From that, I will go to our uh city council members. Would like to go first? Okay, councilor Nix.
Mr. King, um, I wanna thank you for all the time served our city. And I know I've been around a couple of years, but it it's been, it's been very fun and and interesting with that uh. Enthusiasm, you know, and and for a public figure. Your kindness and concern for other individuals is farce bad motives. So, thank you very much, Dwayne, and I enjoyed the time.
Thank you. Um, Dwayne. Um, I was wondering, so I'm getting a little emotional transitions, so if I get chucked down. I apologize ahead of time, but I'd like to just echo uh Nelson Davis's um words. Um, you are the epitome of what we serve. And I believe or not, uh, both miss your history lessons. So I just wanna swell and to the joy of the.
I'm gonna take a different tack, I will keep it quick. I didn't go to work in, uh going out on on a Saturday or Sunday with you, walking the homeless camps. Being in your house when they were working on things like that for one time, and especially after California, where Becky came along, it was always, I I love seeing. I love seeing Alabama, I love seeing you from there, just now. Um, I um, so I want, I I continue to look forward to work with you on homeless issues or or or, you know, picking your pride on stuff as as a big holy spring. For one time and things, um, but I'm gonna take a different tack, I'm gonna thank Debbie, um, because Debbie, thank you for, thank you for, I know for times when uh. When, you know, the rain didn't like not to do this, I can get back and just. Still gave all of his time, uh, but I also know that he talks so much about his grandson and his daughter that uh and his wife. That he is excited to be with, so thank you to the whole family for supporting Dwayne.
Uh, let's see, I just, for a very long time, um. You know, so that will be good. Our dad were friends, uh, John, or uh, you know, I was the same resume, our dads are law firm drivers, we were one great year to the voting. I think it's also for our, with to our community and how we're gonna be a better, it's I about four two years came back, uh. You know, excited red and uh, first time I ran, it was one of my biggest cheerleading. Courage, you need identity, first time, don't give up, stay involved, you know, planning mission, uh, just stay involved, you know, the. And I ran in twenty twenty and uh, thank you, my cheerleader again, uh, the one I heard that, you know. For him, the, you know, it's in us there, the council, um, it's like this for me at this, you know, as well. And what a achievement, her table of voice, right, and uh. A lot of the great things he has achieved are based, amazing to me, uh, uh, to the challenge of hours he have put in. And uh, the friendship, the advice that you have given to me. And I'll take a lot of that moving forward and uh, fortunately, yeah, the last four years have been. Challenging, was challenging for uh, to win, you know, during COVID. And I'm a little bit, we have a lot uh. I wish that they explicitly, um, spent a lot of time, it just wasn't Tuesday night. And uh, Friday night, every other week, um, transition of like the manager. And um, every construction or police chief in our convenience department, it's very stressful for him and the council and uh. It took a lot of hours to wait thirty months years and um. What citizens don't realize is. This job is very selfish act and you're very thankful, thankless job. But they don't realize is the time that they. You. And that take away from their family, the Debbie, Rick's mother, uh, daughter, his grandson, uh. You know, it's not easy and um. Thank you. I thank you guys. It's not goodbye, see you. I'm coming on some other, some other time, um, from the replace. But it's gonna be weird not being over and seeing you here, and I thank you for everything you've given me for support of being here for the campus. And um, to give me that push, uh, on achieve, even work hard to be here and work to be um. A voice of the uh city where we got our citizens, but thank you. And um. She's a shopper.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, we would uh now like to make our intermission and we would like people to stick around, uh, those families to stick around and kind of uh just talk to people, maybe some sort of.
To make our uh. Oh, we didn't have, we're being uh great, because we're not seven, two, three months. And we would like to do uh, I have them be, we starting number, number slurring and. Uh, in number she inspired, we're going to invite the, all right, they declared, they need.
So uh. Would you like to start with uh Mr. Middleton or Mr. Claire?
The two James.
Okay, so we'll just ask Mr. Claire, council member Claire, to come to the podium. First of all, congratulations, Mr. Claire. I have Cindy Prohaska, the city clerk, now, where are you in?
I'm St. John's. We solemnly swear our oath of firm. And will support and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies born and domestic. And I will bear true faith and allegiance to. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well. And faithfully. And faithfully. Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Next, we'll have, uh, Mr. Middleton come and get twine, and then after that, we will do some photographs in front of this year.
I face me.
I'm Middleton.
Do you follow where our.
Do you.
Do you follow where our. And I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend.
The Constitution. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Born and domestic. And I will bear true faith. And allegiance to. The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California. But I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation.
Preservation.
Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully. Discharge duties upon which I'm about to enter. Correct.
See, I'll buy it to you, if you don't like, get the five with the birds, then you're like, oh.
Thank you.
November ten fifteen, twenty twenty four, by ridiculous signal.
By incoming house members. Councilman Clark. Let's. We were making the new council members are making. Three months, I would maybe move to person.
I'm sorry, I'm really looking at our family for being here. I'm gonna try to film Mr. Page's shoes, so those are big shoes to build, and he did the best he can to. Get up where he left off and keep going and looking forward to working with the. House members in the city, we can move the city forward in the positive direction, so, thank you everybody, appreciate it.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the citizens of our data who voted for me to, um, have the confidence and selecting me and representing them for another four years. It's been, uh, great work here serving the city for your debt, um, and have been all. Good times, uh. But when I sit up here and sit up here with my fellow council member, um, we are truly have a good city, uh. You know. In our best interest to make this, uh. Town a better place for the future. Our, um. Time here is temporary for us at the diocese, um. And over all of us, we strive for a better community, uh, for years I achieve, um, some greater things that I already achieved here. And I think to my family, the mass, um, supported me, who I, um. Oftentimes have to be away from them on certain things that, you know, whatnot, and this is, um. You know, so I think they promote their support and many friends who supported me, um, during this last type of election, so there's a lot of the names that ran. I think that were, uh, running and having a. An interest in becoming a public servant for the city of our region, again, it's a great honor, um. To be re-allowed and serving another four years, thank you very much.
Yes, public comment. Public comment. Doing okay.
I just wanna thanks James for setting. And taking our responsibility, so huge responsibility. Very proud of the everybody at home, you know. Especially James, we're taking that for. There's a lot of. That for you, but I'm willing to step up and do a great job, so thank you. Thank you for, for, for running again and being real like this. You know, great things, and I'm just. Very happy and excited to see you guys are taking this leap and doing the right thing with the citizens, thank you.
I just want to say, congratulations, Steve, though. It was a great, great. Like one, and I'm sure you're gonna do the city great, and I'm sure that you're gonna answer and hold back every call.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Claire, I'm America City Council. The city managers, uh, we are moving on to defend the title of the mayor selection, so I just wanted to actually state a process. Uh, that we're gonna be like, ultimately, um, and we continue to strive to get better, we ultimately, uh, strive to do things the correct way, this is the, the correct way. So, as far as how the mayor's election is made, if we're not clear to you, for the practice of the city was the handling of the city manager, that would be taken. It's not that properly ready to go, so ultimately, that's what's gonna happen. The mayor is gonna open the selection of a new mayor. That point, public comment will be received, then public comment will be closed. Oral nominations after public comment will come from the council members as to if they have someone they'd like to see as the mayor, they can make a nomination effectively. Acceptance of those nominations from council members will be requested by the mayor itself, that ultimately, if you're nominated. If you actually accept being nominated, it's by their decision. After acceptance of nominations, a motion will be brought to close the nomination period, motion to close the nomination period requires a second. And it will be worth a vote to proceed. As for Rosenburg's, uh, if no nominations are received, then the governor's city mayor will remain, uh, for a year term. And then finally, I will be handing out, uh, what we're gonna do is you guys are going to vote by writing down on a post-it note that I have here in my hand, the orange post-it note. What we're gonna advocate that you do is in the top line, you write your name. And then extremely large in the center of this post-it note, when we get to the selection process, after nominations happen, we'll send you top. You will then write, um, the person that you were voting for, I will then come back with these posters. And I will make the announcement as to how to each individual voter, so we will have the records, so it is technically open. We hope that this will lead the process, um, rather rapidly and quietly. So if there's any questions, please feel free to ask myself or, um. Attorney Jared, city attorney Jared, Mr. Jared, otherwise, uh, we'll just take it over to the parent, the role of this, uh, process listed on page six.
For public comment at this time, regarding. Selection of.
Gee. I would hope. Think I'll still say exactly as it is for him. In two years, maybe you guys didn't talk. But, um, it's pretty smoothly right now, that's the mayor and president.
Now, where? Now, the public comment is, um. I'm not taking other comment. I will vote, uh, let's vote a comment. And now I will, we want, uh, oral nominations from council members, uh, for. The mayor. The Vegas. What's known and called, uh, nomination for co-mayor. I nominate, uh, Mr. McCoy. I'm sorry. Okay. And there is, uh, no nominations at this time. And then I will know and, uh, councilor major, you accept the nomination.
I do.
Councilman McCoy, if you accept the nomination.
I do.
Okay. It's bring it, uh, I'm the motion to close the, um. Nomination on the second. I have a motion for Councilman Davis. And it's like. I will be long. All right, um, councilman Claire. Councilman Baker. No. Um, and I will vote now.
So at this point, um, Roosevelt's order requires that a motion to close the nomination received. Sorry. Requires that a motion to close the nomination is a two thirds in Jordan. Um, doing the math that will require four, um, four votes for that. Um, at this point, you do not count, um, the requisite number of votes to close the nomination, so the nomination remain open. This point, you appropriate taking further nominations to address this issue.
Open up after a nomination. No nominations.
At this point, you should, um, you should again call for a motion to close.
Okay, fair. Okay, so for a motion to close the nomination. A motion to come from the bay. Councilman, uh, Claire. Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy. And I'm done.
At this point, you again. But this one would be appropriate to reopen the.
Okay. Personally, word. Oh, reopen, now reopen again, okay, reopen nominations again.
Can I have a, a clarification here? Please.
Clarification from the council.
And, uh, or, can you? Yeah, for the council. So, they didn't hear, and we're not gonna be able to close the nomination. I've nominated. Ms. Baker and. Oh, yes, uh, any member of China themselves, any member of the business. Or to. Can they ultimately vote now, can the office support themselves this one? Well, um, I'm having a wonderful. Uh, nominated with me, and nominated with somebody. You certainly said. Well, we can't get these nominations, well. You will just next one. It will be two steps, one will be, which is better, I do. That too is supermood really. And so. But there is a requirement that you choose a man. Um, at some point, if it becomes that the council doesn't get to this point, um, I guess the ultimate. Need to again agenda this. If at that point, it again is a, um, a failed motion situation. Um, I think we're in a position where agreed, Kim, remember, um, go ahead and take action. And if CA is written a mandate to acquire four to order to put your nomination for something along that, if they want to begin that particular. I think it also be that under a root. I think it also be that under a ruling root purpose. Because question for me, yes, um. I know that we made an exception to the rule. And we allow simple majority, close the nomination.
Motion now for, uh, Davis to, uh, make an exception to. Or, um, sure.
Excuse me, I will say that motion.
I have a motion, Davis, and like a, uh, Councilman Baker, I'm welcome, Councilwoman.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yes.
And, uh, Baker, yes, Councilman McCoy.
What is the question? What is the question of what?
Uh, Councilman Davis, uh, may your request of making a simple majority. And not do with the rules we are following today. Although, you know. And I vote, you know, as well. Uh, that motion though. I go back to open up the, uh. Nomination. Number ten will, uh.
That will come back by a simple majority. That, that is the example.
Yeah, so the, you mentioned that we, is the. Requires a two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I've been mentioned now.
I was saying simply.
In the, uh, that means. Um, so in the, uh, with original purpose for having a simple majority, two thirds of majority. For a motion to close the nomination. The public policy behind that. So that members of the board who are in minority vote. Have the opportunity to put their name, um, to where candidate who they, um, defeated. On the ballot for nomination. Otherwise, we're just a simple majority, the majority of the, the board. Could nominate only people from their group and close the nomination to the meeting. So just to make you aware of the public policy behind this. It's so everyone on the board is gonna be able to be two members, be nominated by themselves or by another. To be, um.
Thank you, so then I have a record of an information. There's any correct. When that's said, I will, um. Give them a nomination myself for the mayor position.
May I ask a question to the attorney?
Another question from, uh, I'm sorry, uh.
Yeah, I just want to clarify that, um, we don't like, that Mr. Davis does not need to, um, re-nominate someone that currently. The nominations include. Councilmember Baker, councilmember McCoy, and now councilmember.
Oh, I thought we had failed to start it, but, yeah, that's something I was trying to go up, okay. Now then, open up after then.
No, I'm just, I'm, Mr. Jared.
Oh, yeah. My box, you know, just giving you an opportunity to value.
Yeah. At this point, we're in a situation, you've nominated yourself, well, amazing. Anyone else nominated, whether.
Or the, you the, due to prior nominations, still stand.
Yep, did not hear you.
Okay, so that's very important that everybody know that currently the only person nominated. That's her.
I'd like to nominate, um, Ms. Baker.
Right. What's the, um, the nomination, so, uh. So Councilman Baker, uh, for mayor. Councilman, um, sorry, I have to go, uh, nevermind, hey, I'm sorry, but, uh, then I have the, close the nomination, and then go through the processing process.
Correct, okay.
Okay, close the nomination. And Councilman Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yeah.
Councilman McCoy.
Yeah.
And that'll be done.
I don't want to say it. It didn't get on, I'm doing the process, Councilman Davis. Let's get on. They're not, we're just doing their. Same, okay.
But you can make me understand, I'm not even told to put in a study rate. It's, I'm here the process, I know the process. And the process is that if we aren't able to elect one, the current regime remains in the power. And I, and I'm not so sure that's the best for the city. I think a change would be good. Not that you're good bad. I just think a change keeps things rolling well. The change is, that's why we have a selection every four years. And it really. We're doing a good job. And while we're a step away, so we can get somebody else. To, to get a different perspective of what's going on in the city. So, you're there, and I appreciate you, Mr. McCoy. Close any nominations, but we can get on with McCoy, please.
And I'm sure she has, I'm sure they were, you know, their names. Um, and then right here again, and, uh, I do.
I'm trying to follow the, I'm trying to follow what these are the rules that are set, also now the, you know. That you have to try and follow that, and when you, um, when you agree with something, you'll go through, you can agree with something, um. Then it is your, it is your privilege and your right to either vote yes and see that go. Not to see that.
I agree with you.
So I, I do not receive, um, I don't, we, you know, too. Then it's your question?
Yeah, absolutely. Not the other way around here.
Well, I, I can say in six years on this council, I have many, many times. Not heard the answers I want to hear, and not heard, heard things that I've, that said to me that I want to say. So probably the access part, you know, we got to fix it. I'm, I'm surrendering to our attorney as far as the procedure goes. Because he can't explain any of what's going on, and he gets five tomorrow.
The vote by himself.
No, 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 I just said, procedurally, I would, I would. Defer you because you have no idea what's going on, you're providing. It's very procedure. If there's a procedure question, I defer it to you.
Well, the, the, I'm, the, so often, and it's gonna be another motion. To, the, you. Open the nomination, what, what? And again, the nomination not carry over to the district round. Anyone can be nominated, um, anyone can nominate themselves. And I mean. As stated, a new mayor needs to be voted upon at some point. And I think that the. The outcome could be seeking intervention here. The floor is now open for nominations, anyone could nominate. Any member of the city government can nominate any other than number one themselves, put a position in there.
No nominations at this time. Nominations and the nominations have been brought in there.
Some of that. Like the nominee, Colleen Baker?
I have those nominations. Oh, I nominated.
Well, you, you can't. I don't mind if we close the nomination.
Oh, you said they're ready, oh, all right. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I just.
It'll actually occur.
I can't. Oh. So Councilman, uh, Davis has nominated Councilman Baker. I will, um, nominate, uh, look back into, uh, Councilman Boy. And myself, I will go back and some. A motion, uh, motion to close. Councilman, um. Claire.
Yes.
Councilman, uh, Davis.
Yes.
Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman.
No.
Oh, no.
So we, we're gonna continue this process again.
Yes, Councilman Davis.
Do we do this?
I received, yeah, such a debate. Correct.
That, that's up to the, of the council.
Whatever, most of the council. Yes, Councilman Clay.
Just based on. There's something that I'm doing that I need to do, that is possible. There's not been, so, and maybe, create this, now, please, present. There is, please say. Never mind. In fact, please, yeah. You're a G.
Hey. I can say, so. One more time for a. Nomination, you may, you may correct.
Yes.
Myself for mayor.
And then, uh, Councilman Baker. Right. Vote to those nominations. Councilman Claire.
Yes.
Councilman Davis. All right, Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy.
Yeah.
And that's me. Councilman Davis.
Uh, we're gonna do this one more time.
Yeah. All right, I'm not making this film.
I will need to, yes.
I'll put it now.
I'd like to nominate James Claire. And I'd like to nominate myself.
Question.
I'm not sure if you can, and should I have a nation like this thing, first?
Yeah.
I have to, well, do you believe?
I'm sure, I don't really do any of the tests here, I think. I'm not, I'm still.
You.
That would like you.
One of the parties is. You nominating yourself, virtually, you. Where, that was, in, with the second of nominating yourself. Let's, um, let's, you have a conservative side, so like this easier side issue. Take a break here and look at. Form on that, or just move on here, but, um, look at yourself this round.
I'm, I'm right.
You can either take a break, and I can look into that, if I keep on anything. Whether I think about that. Or you just draw your last nomination of nominating yourself and proceed with the nomination.
Earlier, I had a lot of earth nominees to be.
I don't, I don't.
I haven't did.
I don't see that, I'm going to be the first round, seeing some, maybe Baker, Milton, McCoy. The second one being same, the third one, Milton, Davis, Baker. Then fourth, Baker, Baker, Milton, still, fifth, Baker, Baker, and Floyd, Milton. And then on the sixth round, Davis, Davis, Baker, Claire, Baker.
On the fifth round, Milton nominated except then the player.
Why do you?
Didn't miss a question. Don't think I was making sense of the nomination. Councilmember Baker, and she had nominated solid, who's, uh, Councilmember Byron Knox.
Yeah. Those are typical bits, and, yeah, I mean, yeah, they are. They come together, we've got, outward showings.
Is, is anyone who's been nominated?
Man, I appreciate it, and I feel.
Thank you.
I have to be disrespectful.
More particular, I can answer my personal question.
I'm here, sorry.
Good.
To you. To you. Okay. Uh, you have a, uh, nomination, like, I was asking. You're making, you know. I mean, um. I appreciate it. Be appropriate, releasing. Be appropriate, releasing, having to be in there. I think. We both have. You do, and it's what they are in. With this process together. I appreciate. I feel be fair to you guys. Good thing that's something. Having the opportunity to actually. I didn't want. The nomination. Yeah, thank you. Uh, so Councilman, you're finding a nomination of Baker.
I can nominate myself.
And then we have, um. Councilman Davis and Councilman Baker. A motion to close, Councilman Claire. I guess, Councilman Davis. Yes, Councilman Baker.
Yes.
Councilman McCoy. No, and I will be a no.
Yes, for the sake of the record, who made the motion to, to, to accept?
Oh, okay. Oh, we must check that.
Yeah, did you make the motion to accept the nominee? You just went around the rule.
Oh, obviously, I forgot again.
But then you didn't go to seven. It's just the word.
Oh, okay.
I don't believe a motion was made.
I think not. Motion's noted. Table. If anyone wished to, they could vote no. And we need to act here for seventh round, which we are now. The motor alternatives here. The motor alternative you might consider are. Motion to return. From the long, the fourth, the same thing. Of the motion to table this item, go to the next item on the agenda. Um, I'll jump to the. Uh, to that item from, um, Mayor Protown. If it is the same situation, um, then you can, the motion, um, to turn. Motion to. Table that. Um, for. Even on a consent, because we need to pay. Do we might have a recess or? I'm sorry, correct. Oh. Oh, a motion, uh, to recess. Or. If we go to the mayor pro temp, or table the mayor selection there pro temp. To another date and move on to our next agenda. Which one, what we're trying to do. Take one.
Mayor.
Okay. So we have a motion to table the mayor selection. Motion to table. Second, Councilman, uh, point zero dollar. Yes, Councilman Davis. Councilman Baker.
No.
Councilman McCoy. Yes. Uh, we'll say yes, motion passed on the board of plan. And we bought consent agenda. All matters of consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted by wind motion. Unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item or discussion. A approval ratification of payment issued from November twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, for December seventeenth, twenty twenty four. B cash balance and budgets to actual fiscal performance reports for June twenty twenty four. Cash balance budget to actual fiscal, uh, performance reports for July twenty twenty four. D approval of minutes of the regular meeting held December third, twenty twenty four. E approval of minutes of the special meeting held December tenth, twenty twenty four. F approval that is as a convention for the green one part field reduction fraction. Where the city can action for is the motion to adopt the consent agenda of the city council, of the city per as per. And second. Only roll call, Councilman Claire.
Yes.
Councilman Davis.
Yeah.
Councilman Baker just asked. Uh, yes, I don't know, say, yeah. Just not since five to zero. Okay. Minutes thirty minutes are dealt or not online.
I tried to wide stream, but I cut this off and I had to restart.
Here, give me one moment, uh, to find my.
Right, the American City Council, based on whether the city manager, so the item is telling you at this moment this evening is to adopt the Revolution twenty four dash fifty four to approve the twenty twenty five eight thousand for the regular city council meetings. Uh, it should be noted that there is a title on the staff report that, um. The February twenty meeting is actually February eight meeting. It doesn't change the fact that it's a Tuesday after a holiday. But it is noted that it's not February twenty, February is eight. And so currently, we are basically stating that on February eighteenth, uh, is a Tuesday after a Monday holiday. And on September second, uh, is a Tuesday after a Monday holiday. And then, uh, July first happens to be at point of July week. And then we have one more, uh, request in there, I believe, that the splitter T A Perry said. That was just coming off of the holiday break, uh, that if we do it, then it may not be. Very light calendar, or be quite literally just set up for me, and so we're advocating that those four meetings be deleted. But you can change your mind, you can say you want those meetings, or, or you can also say, hey. When I got more meetings, it's really up to you guys to make the decisions, but staff is advocating, have a quick. Where ahead. That based that is looking past, looking back at the past three years of my being here, the decision remained in the past eight months. Reasoning, and so we brought you, uh, this option on ready to build health and other things. Some of the things that you, um, twenty four that you have a year, that you could be done under twenty like that. For, so I'm here to answer any question that you may have, uh, in future meetings, uh, that pretty self explained.
Would you ask a letter? What should we pass? I don't think there. Comments, changes.
I mean, I would like to see the, the September second, February twenty. See that. Those would have to be where exactly. They know. They'll be. Be here on those days. I know you've been criticized without them too early. Six thirties to really take. I would go, I would say January seventh and April first, maybe.
Just for, uh, clerical purposes, that is technically the eighteen. Other than where we know that it was.
I, I, I appreciate that you said the holiday, uh, Mr. City.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Leonard, uh, one point time at communications, um, and we had talked about the, um. That plan meetings in January, that that would kind of a state of the city meeting. Is that still, um, the plan?
Yeah, the plan is ultimately every, um, on the January twenty first meeting, every department head will be here and drafting, um, kind of the prior wins of projects that each department had worked on. And then I'll look forward over one twenty five and what's to come, and so we're calling that the state of the city. Um, but it certainly could become something more substantial based off of, um, I know at the coms meeting, we thought at some point to be using the community theater possibly in future years. Um, and having a more robust meeting with invitation and, um, trying to draw more people into the meeting. The way in the community involved, this being the surface setup to just be in the space, if, if really that's at the moment is what it sounds like, but we ultimately can. Change that if you guys would like.
Thank you. And so, uh. Request to have the, the regular meeting. Meeting, uh. Put that on.
So we do this.
Uh, I don't think we discussed it. Probably, but to be safe, that's getting, I don't think it does a big deal.
No, your motion did not. Every other day, sir. You said your motion. Your motion is brought in the future meeting. Let me stick to our agenda, please. We're being. Let me stick to our agenda, please.
Yeah, I can. February eight. Should we? February eighteen, that request by. Councilman McCoy or anyone, I believe I have. It's a February twenty eighth, not a February eighteen. They act her present. Yeah, we can add it. Add it back on, yeah. I said we got it back on as well. I rest, I am a rest. Since that we, um. Just add it back on, or double vote for that.
Yeah, there'll need to be a motion and a vote for this item, like, ultimately, you'll just want to be very clear in your motion as to what you're advocating.
Right. Motion.
Um, this is Councilman, what I'm taking a motion. And, um, February eighteenth, being limited as a regular meeting, uh, for the wire city council, we're two thousand and twenty. February eighteen.
Any make a motions ever heard about that change, correct?
No.
It's, uh, it's just. Oh, sorry.
That is Labor Day, September.
Is it currently that there's a motion to add February eighteenth on to, uh, back on to what has been presented to the staff?
Yes, sir. Okay. It's currently, yeah. I don't know. When I'm holding, I don't think the motion, um, to group. Like the twenty twenty five, which is, um, you know, the background for the eighteen. So the first was for Councilman McCoy and myself, Mayor Middleton. Roll call. Councilman what? Councilman Davis. No. Councilman Baker.
So we're not sure what the motion is.
We had motion to group.
Well, the motion I made was to take February eighteen. Which is marked as February twenty. And that is a cancel. Meeting right now, my nation. And second, assuming that.
So your motion to approve the rest of the calendar? Because the way the motion was stopped, I thought you approved the rest.
No. You don't put the eighteen back.
Sorry, still back.
Yeah, just for, I mean, you're welcome to use the, the, to the video, and no, it would probably be, um. More helpful if somebody were to say their motion, they're retired, casually retiring.
Did you need me?
Sorry.
So you're, uh. But the motion would be.
We will show on our discussion. Now, I shouldn't run. Yeah, it's, um, your motion.
Uh, just, uh, wanna, I wanna complicate this. But we're skipping a little comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I think you still have some conversation that.
Okay, yeah.
I think the law. In complicated, I might suggest you go to every other Tuesday. They have a pool of twenty six meetings a year. This way you don't have that big gap in the end.
You have no comment? For, uh, essentially, I'm. In front of my calendar. I'll make the motion to approve the calendar as presented.
I'll second that.
Do we have a, the motion for Council, I recycle, and then the second for, uh, Council Baker to approve the twenty twenty five calendar as presented to you all? Councilman Claire. Yes. Councilman Davis.
The eighteenth is.
No, we're approving it as it is, I mean, the motion approved as it is, as I can prepare. Yeah. Councilman Baker?
Yes.
Councilman McCoy? No, and I would come to that, uh, motion house of the board one. We have the right, um, that was a nine B for the many appointments, so we table this as well. And who, who knows?
Was this table?
Oh.
You can, yeah, but it's still, I thought.
Oh, I would say.
It's the mayor.
Did you care that?
No, it's very good. Uh, so I would, it's very.
You sense?
Yeah. So we probably. I guess, I don't know, you also have an issue with. Actually, I have.
Yes.
If one wants to just play as is, right?
The only, uh, the only problem that is that I was coming back. I feel. Who will be attending there and speaking here. I've been, who can send either as a video or a place. Um, I told him that that would be something I could see because I would let them know on the eighteen. So ultimately, um, in the interim, somebody now.
I told now, and then. Saying, you know, more than. Somebody, somebody decide who they think wants to be here.
Okay, I just sent you guys, you know, before you know, that's the only thing that's pressing. And then just also know this, that. I'm not holding their camera on the eighth. City of work, uh, there's a request that that sign that the council would have decided. Nation, the show is completely black and decided that. Being as well, now hypothetically, I can best make a replacement. We can't cover the decided of the time period. Now that there are some expectations out for other meetings to see, that's the little piece uh where the seas, thanks.
Thank you.
I'm gonna reset. No, I, I, I got. All right, all of it, okay.
So. If I can. Mr. Jared, question. And since we, or the no mayor selection. Do I still just? Can you, the mayor, do you keep the, go to Lola and continue being the mayor?
Yeah, since that process is being frustrated by. Yeah. As far as it's Adam. B. I'm, I don't see this down for the fact, the research. How those appointments are made. Um, I know it would be appropriate to make those appointments right now unless we actually know what the code says. The, I guess, the history on it has been very. Protrual, um, and I don't know where that. Which way you know, um, and so I think the council will be sure as to each one of those appointments, where that comes from. Now, once again, um, a quick search, I'm not seeing.
So which we give a motion artist, uh, I guess, is the table item nineteen. Thanks.
Yes. I don't want it, I don't want it. I think. I've seen really young ones, two, six years being here, so I'm gonna disagree with you here and that. I think that all members are being very critical of the fact that you disagree does not say that we don't try to get along or. You know, try to, try to get things done. So as I may disagree with that, only because I want that out there in public, that I don't think this council is, is not to leave. Shows us as being someone. Something dysfunctional, I don't think this is functioning.
So I kind of think uh, Mr. McCoy is one on the market here. I think we're a workable group. I think we need to get together. And decide what we're doing, and we do need to come here. I understand when the government gets done, then it's a whole old situation. That will keep going until they do decide the right thing there. And that just shows that we're in depth in doing what. And that's surely a natural reason. A little bit. So. Yeah. I'm not a dancer either, but I think that we probably need to look at it. And wait till we do want to do this. That tonight, that, me, it's on the agenda, it's possible. So we need to do a serious look at. That's, that's what I am to say.
So then are we ready to tell an ID or not?
Hi.
I don't wish to, I'm a baker. Also, you know, decided. Yes. After the days. They, they, they need to. I think we'll cut that after the meeting. Uh, there's a wonder, uh, so let matters.
Yes.
Councilor Baker?
Yes.
But, yes, and I heard some sort of motion passed in five zero six people, and maybe. Number ten city, your staff report, you have to, we're now.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mayor, where, where the city council takes another city managers. Um, I attended the airport petition training on Tuesday, twelve ten, that was rather interesting. Uh, Chief Dillon uh also attending, and then this morning we touched base with Renee Crane at the courthouse, and then. Behavioral Health used to learn more about the project. Uh, when we choose the petition, so we're doing currently to say in the court. Uh, Lola, February eight at five P M at the casino. Please RSVP for the city clerk, something. Wherever you're third, uh, if you're bringing uh, uh, so if there's another or partner or friend or something. That, that would seem appropriate, we're hosting here, and so you just need to know that by the third, you're coming. All and different, right? I don't think I mentioned this last meeting possibly ended, I didn't have the light of life by this, or Siski on twelve seven, and we're just sitting. Done, and we had footage of that event by, uh, maybe you, I, I just really went over. So. Uh, more meetings than our options, I have, uh, Chief Dillon is working with an honorary archery, also, uh, ultimately, I'm thinking, and the C O S T. Uh, possible mobile option, and. I have a particular one of the, now, this church, and so they are having a meeting tomorrow. If they're for possibly approved or not agreeing the use of their facility, depending on ways that are as a party. With counsel, they've done that, they did, so if that does happen, I will confer, um. You know, people confer with the mayor and then. Special based on weather, um, then you guys may want to hear about that. January, October, just handle. So it's gonna be a, for clinical, be prepared in order to deal with this, uh, winter conditions, but there's always. That hurts forever, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Senator. I'll go to, uh, how members were. There were, it's, uh. Our first, we would like to have a session to, uh. Or to bring that back on, uh. First, right, January, my first meeting. Sorry, it's me.
Yeah, January twenty first, and I'm sorry, which I didn't, there you are, it didn't matter.
That would bring back the.
Election.
To selection. Records, yeah. The three, yeah. So the, uh. Mayor, and then the, uh.
Party election committee.
Session committees. That's great, okay. The council. What was, what was that? The selection of the, so the mayor, mayor votes him, and selection of the committees, the, the, the guidance that we. Yes. I don't think. So my better, all right. First, were there? Reports. So this, I'm.
I'm talking to my wife. I think, again, that I heard it very specifically. Um, I did some out of the area research in the valley. Um, I went to the little bay. In. And all of him, I don't know. How to. Consider the janitor number, yeah, that is the. Exactly three, four, five, two, thirteen. Project. Um, you know, I was walking the park forty fifth, and when I was on the, um, on the agenda, I. Took a walk with my. Away from. Two, there maybe, and, uh. They have done this before, where they have fell dead trees and. Lot of us, it's, I was late, it's. And the first time I noticed that was. So. You're hard with length, still sitting on a ground. And I can't see any, I'm gonna do this again, it's a good. It's possible, a lot of dead trees. Angry, what vines are dead, what rivers are dead. Um, I think we should try to get that wood out to these. That is. Now. Need. And, uh, just make it that aware. To the public, to, to stack and store it someplace for later. Could be. But that's it, you know, and I'm not looking for me and secrets, and. I get down, they will, they'll never, when we start to. But there are those that cannot get out and do that. And I think this would be really a good, good public reductions for the various city. Thank you. Thank you. That's it. Councilman Baker?
Uh, thank you. Um, I also did research at Churroby on December seventh, uh, with my family. And to Councilmember Davis's family. So, um, it's, it was beautiful. I heard that the night lights here was, um, just awesome as well. Um, the only I would need that I did was I, um, attended the Patriots meeting on December twelfth. Um, to hear about the, um. Teen Challenge, um. Alcohol Rehab Home that is open to my rehab, um, and, um, they're working in conjunction with Behavioral Health. And also hope to partner with, uh, Project Base Camp, um, so that is a really. Exciting opportunity, um, for people to get help locally or alcohol and drug addiction. Um, in addition to that, um, we, um, those present also heard an update on Project Base Camp. And saw a video of, you know, her release that they continued the name. And other than that, just sure that we have a great process.
All right. Baker? Tom McClaren, I, I mean, unfortunately, what have you done? Recently?
Probably the best I've seen so far, was when we did the. Hope everybody asked for your presence.
All right. All right. Come on, boy.
Thank you. I, 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 well, I must confess that I don't have a lot of stock, because. I had gotten a, a shot, a emergency shot, said at four o'clock, fine, I think I have it for. I got, I think. We don't, in the council meeting, I didn't, I didn't call five days. Um, I, I do want, I want to share something that I've been pushing, Jason probably started, he's saying. And so he probably just wants to slap him sometimes, but, um. The day shall ask, shall boil as opposing a thousand, many, many, in the United States. The reason they're opposing them is they're focusing more on electric, uh, electrical or energy now. Um, if you spend much time talking, maybe you don't like political benefits, but. On local politics, I can, I, I cannot let my national politics impede upon local politics, because we don't, our citizens, our businesses. To do the best we can do for them. Um, and so I'm going to let you all know, I'm going to continue to politic our city for charging stations on Land Street. Behind either rings or your, not include, not ever, parking on another city one, and the one behind Victor's, because, hey. I, I need to bring people into the city, and then they'll stop there, and they'll be out to spend dollars there. Rather than going down, ready some homework, charging there, and letting, you know, and letting the big, not that I don't want ready to make money, you know, friends and access is. So I'm going to continue to, to, to push for that, and advocate, should say, again, fix it, you know, they're probably kicking me out, probably. Occasionally, but I, you know. That, I think it's something we need to do for the businesses, I mean, speaking to local businesses downtown, and they. And drop me down there, they say, oh, we. I said, well, it's not, yeah, it's something that we like, I like to see done, so. And then, um, I want to thank Pierce Siski, um, I have not seen video, oh, I have seen the video, I'm getting lights. But I wanted to say that, looking at, Pierce Siski, uh, the video they did on the Christmas parade. Was phenomenal, and that's done by, uh, Mindy York, though. Like, Wayne. Yeah, you know, she's a, she's a long term resident, she's only fifty six generations. Great job, really, the stuff you're doing now, showing my rehab in a very positive light, and will make people want to know. So I'm gonna thank you for that, and you have to see it, take it with us tomorrow, and we can send it every year. Thank you. And very good.
I, um. Did attend the, a little bit, and, um, it was crowded, and, yeah, I remember beyond this year, and for. Lot of feedback that was better than the years past, and a lot of what's in it, so it looked pretty. This is a new house. Um, I, I did a good work, I worked with Lola, where is the. Extension of the casino then, um, I played a little bit, hotel, great to see, and. Where you do. A different place to the event, uh, uh, because you write out an option. You know. Eat in places, and meal conferences, uh, nice and. Welcome, happy, um, other than that, um, I believe. Before it's coming to an end. Sorry, have a beer here soon, and, uh. I don't care what we do, that's. Um, but that, I will, I wish I could, like, have a holiday with the, with this, and, uh, happy the year, see you as all that, on January first. Ready to drink?